This is Saturday. That was just amazing.
Well, that's gonna be the sixties today.
Well, it's the sixties on Saturday.
I can't remember that part of that.
Get ready for the next ice.
Yeah, all right. Was that approved?
Yep.
It's done, yeah. So the proof, and that should happen. Yeah. I think it was three different, three different elections.
Yeah.
This is the first one. There's another half in there. And it was one, well, a girl and a half. Or two minutes, twenty. Every year for, for, but maintaining the calcumating facility. It's up here. It's a person out. Do we spend that much each year now?
Do we need to say under the budget hearing that there were no objections? Is that something that would be hurting us?
Normally, if it was not, there was a hearing, but it didn't last a birthday.
Yeah, right.
That was present, so, because I couldn't work in the other day, what else is missing? So I just struck that part out.
Every year.
We had it in the past, that doesn't change.
Well, once it's approved, does it have to happen every year? Reapproved.
There might have been some objection if they just weren't of a waste.
That's true. That's true.
The mill, it stays the same, but the budget's.
No, no question. State, but you do have your obligation to give it every year. My kind of attitude.
The state says just one million.
It says, oh, it says a third of the cost, two.
Look, the county says a bigger bit more.
Yeah.
The state says just one million. A mill.
Not gonna be used for anything maintenance or rebuilding or whatever it says. Might be, I believe what you have. What you have, yeah. No, that could be used for.
If the commissioner's decided to.
Expansion, I assume that means get a new building then.
Not the way to know what it is, really.
Yeah. Oh. Well, I don't know. I haven't. That's what circles.
Grants. And the council meeting might have asked me more to give. And they started up.
Well, how will they know that? How will they know that? I did just like. But you said.
It's just for senior proclases.
Yeah, well, we know that. But I'm just saying.
That's what I'm saying.
But how, but how can a building is not. Well, if it's expansion, it could mean to add a new building, can't it? I don't know. I'm not for it yet, I'm just asking, huh?
In the original charter, it does accept that, so I don't know what part of it.
Okay. Well, I don't know.
But, well, it has been before they asked for grants when they restarted, and then they also asked for, from the council meeting, passed.
Well, I could.
Started both of them.
Like our senior center, which is doing, is telling me, hey, that building, that facility, if it needs a new roof or whatever.
The senior center itself, they have money, they put back profits from their living money, maybe donations, maybe fundraisers.
Combination of all of them.
Usually you do a fundraiser, you just draft it.
Right, private, private.
Just five, and you get three goods of what it would cost, and then you could go to do a fundraiser.
On for sale, county money.
I move to approve the minutes from December thirty first, two thousand.
Exactly. Well, that's what, that's, that'd be, you know, if we're talking.
One second. Have a motion of second approval minutes during the other discussion. Not all of them, they would say aye.
Aye.
They have one tax abatement for seventy-two dollars that was solid waste disposal, few charged on their own parcel. Well, residents at that parcel, I guess.
Um, it's a home that's on leased land, so we'll add it to where the homes are on to personal property side.
I move to approve abatement two thousand eighteen zero eight for seventy-two dollars.
Second. Any further discussion? Not all of them, they would say aye.
Aye. So we have two invoices for Lincoln Park Manor. One is Lincoln Building Supply for a seal for the air conditioning unit. The other one is another grease trapped pump. How many times have we done that this year?
Yeah, you have to have it done quarterly.
Quarterly is what they told me that they do. And so.
I thought it was.
That may be a re.
Twice a year, but we checked into it here a few months ago.
Well, yeah, because we didn't pay that one for a couple of months because we were wondering if it was a duplicate bill.
We thought it was a duplicate, and then they found out they had to be done every quarter.
And they wouldn't come back until we paid it. Um, and Bruce, I think I pronounced that correct, he was gonna come in one day and explain to you what it does and why they come up quarterly. But, uh, he said the last several times it's been pretty sludgy. And then he would explain, you know, the process and why it does, but.
I'm sure they have to, so it starts transferring the grease into the sewer system. Okay, Sedona, do you want to be called Sedona?
DeeDee's fine.
Okay. Well, you always.
Much easier.
There's always kind of been DeeDee, but I'm not, man, that's always Sedona.
I feel like I should put a real name, but.
What's that?
I said I feel like I should put a real name in that, so.
Um, I just have updates for you guys from last week. Um, I checked with the principal of this school on the internship, and she did state that it is at our discretion if we pay, um, the, the high schooler that we bring in. She says would, they just code it differently. If we do not pay them, it's considered an internship, and if we do pay them, it's considered a work-study program. So it's all considered our choice. She, I just told her that, um, I would give back to her if you guys decided that was something that you wanted to do.
Do, is it possible to change that, um, status during the year if the person works out to be satisfactory? You know, that skills are good, and that's useful, that maybe we could start a work, move them into work-study instead of.
Yes, it, it, it is possible. Um, it would basically just require some wallpaper work, but it is possible to switch.
Right now, it would be from now to the end of the school year.
It actually does not start until the beginning of next school year.
Oh, we, I see.
You have all summer to take the applications and the interviews and all of that.
My feeling is that I would hate for them to start on work-study at that age and not be able to perform the task, you know, and be paying them. We ought to see their skill level for the job that we have for them.
I personally think at that age, if you're going to get credits for schoolwork, that it should be a volunteer position so that they can get the experience needed. And we are facilitating training, which may cost us some time.
Right.
So I, I would say we, I would approve opening it for volunteer position that they would get school credits for, but I wouldn't start out paying someone personally. Especially because we don't have it budgeted.
Right.
So if, if Liz would like to begin that task of searching for someone who wants that kind of experience, and they do that in lieu of being in school to get credits.
Okay.
I don't see why they couldn't move forward with that unless anybody objects.
By second semester, we would have a new budget.
Right, it would be through December.
I think so.
My, my feeling is that the first semester ought to be, where there's credit. If it's successful, I, I don't mind helping kids go into work-study.
Well, and by then, the training portion of it should be over.
It's over, we've, we've trained it, yeah.
And they, they get re, uh, we do evaluations on them, just, just like we do regular associates, so even if it's somebody that doesn't work out, we could possibly join somebody in mid-year. Okay.
I'll find them then.
Yeah, I think that type of clerical work would be appropriate.
Okay. And on the, uh, newspaper, where you wanted me to check if we could do like three days, one week, two days, and next? I'm sorry.
Really split it?
Yes, they will, on the contingency that there are not two Sundays. Uh, we can't do like Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and then Sunday, Monday.
So let's do that.
I would suggest, right, I would suggest one week have a Sunday and one week have a Wednesday, because those are your bigger papers.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's do that. Then at least we know what we're getting for our money.
Also, uh, Del Jettmer had told me that there is a website called the Kansas Board of EMS Directors website that will, uh, we can advertise the EMS director for free on it. Would you like me to place an ad in there?
Okay.
Okay, and so now we are on to the temporary EMS director position. I spoke with all of the full times over there, and I have a list of who would and who wouldn't, but had recommendations for others. Um, Brandon Cochran, of course, stated he would last week, couldn't be sure. Shiloh Florence said that she would. Um, Gerald Halad said he would, but would recommend Brandon first. Um, Tommy Napp said no, but he would recommend it be given to Brandon. And then Del Jettmer, who is the longest running associate over there, said he would not like the position, but he will assist anybody who takes it in any way that he can.
Well, I would say, you know, a couple of them recommended Brandon, Brandon is the current director in another service, so he obviously knows what it takes and has the abilities to do the job. I think that you're putting someone in that wouldn't require any training, so I would temporarily at least.
Well, I appreciate you contacting all of them. I think it's kind of settled within the department as far as what they've expressed, so I would move to appoint Brandon Cochran as.
I think we need to, there's probably, we need to discuss with him, probably, as far as compensation or anything you'd require on a temporary basis to do that, or?
I would do it at my current rate of pay, just to get somebody in that position.
Okay.
So that we can get through to the hiring process.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that before we.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon.
I've moved to approve Brandon Cochran as temporary director of EMS department.
I will second. Any further discussion? Not all of them, they would say aye.
Aye.
Got to today.
Yes.
Yes, and I was wondering, maybe we need to, since we're going to put the, add the newspaper, we had originally said for the next two, well, I guess it would be three weeks, including this week, that we'd be accepting applications. I wonder if we need to extend that by about two weeks so that we get that in the paper and then, because if we do, I don't know, we probably can't get it in this week. Tomorrow's Tuesday.
Hmm, I can check on it, we might be able to, because she's already got the ad itself, I've already mailed through the ads, so I may be able to go ahead and give her the okay today.
Okay, so if potentially this is the first week, and then it runs the second week, that's, and we chose like a Sunday, that'd be the twentieth, so that only gives five more days, because we originally said the twenty-fifth. So maybe we should push that through to the first week in February, which would be like through the eighth is the Friday. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Give us about a month.
Okay. Also, was it your intent to decrease the pay of the past EMS director? Um, he, it received a five dollar an hour raise at the time he took over the position.
Okay.
And that would start, uh, December twenty ninth.
Okay, yeah. Um, where were, what was it, twenty?
Twenty-one, so if you will.
It was a sixteen. It was a twenty-one even?
Yes.
Okay, so you need a motion to change the pay. I move to change the pay rate for Brett Kingen from twenty-one dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour effective December twenty ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Any further discussion? Not all of them, they would say aye. All right.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to start?
I guess we might as well.
Okay. So I just put it on the agenda because I know we need to discuss it. Uh, we need to know what you want to do for cost of living increases, because we'll be doing longevity checks this week for all employees, and so if you grant any kind of raise, it goes back to December twenty-sixth. We really need to get it included with the longevity, so we don't have to correct payroll. Or we make any kind of raises effective January twenty-sixth and then forward. But you guys really did not discuss any further last year, you know, what balance you were going to do. I know a lot of department heads asked me, and I told them I had no idea, but I'm not sure any of them got brave enough to come down and ask you guys what your intentions were, but. You budgeted fifty cents for raises. I don't know, you know, if you want to do half cost of living, half merit, all merit, no cost of living, um, percentage.
Um, you had a department that was finished with evaluations, what department was that?
Oh, that was the health department.
Health department.
I have them with me now.
Okay, and then any word from the other departments?
No, no.
Okay, and have you even contacted them as far as, I know you've had a lot of other tasks to do, but.
I think we wanted to know exactly what I needed to do before I launched forward.
And I think we need to have all those evaluations done if we're going to assign a cost of living, so maybe, or, excuse me, uh, merit-based. So I think we need to put a timeframe on that, and then maybe you could relay that message to the department heads and say, we need these evaluations by, you know, what do we want to aim for? The first quarter of the year, have them done, and that gives us the rest of this month and then through March.
Did we ever decide, were they doing them on their anniversary dates of hire, or are they doing them?
We didn't decide anything as far as what I remember.
I'd say there was no policy, no, no further discussion. That's one of the things I hope maybe DeeDee could help you guys with to figure out. You know, I don't know if you want to do, I know some of your applicants that you had 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 said in their lines of work, they did it on their anniversary dates. I don't know if you want to, to do something different this year, and then knowing next year it will be on their anniversary dates.
Yeah, I mean, the problem with that is if we're going to give a raise based on the evaluation, you know, I mean, weighting that in, then if they're all on a different day, that really doesn't coincide with everyone getting that at the same time, or getting it within a certain pay, um, period. You know, I think we need to set one deadline for this year, in my opinion.
It would be easier for payroll, I'm gonna speak out of turn, but it would be easier for payroll if you changed all of the payroll at one time, because there's so many rooms for errors, there's so many ways that employees could be missed.
And if you're doing just individuals within departments and then department by department, yeah, I, I would say we need to set a, a deadline. My suggestion would be the first quarter of the year. That way, it gives bigger departments a chance to get theirs done, and then everyone is eligible at the same time for that.
Is that just for this year, or you mean for all of us?
Just for this year specifically. I mean, I don't know how, how do you feel about requiring the department heads to turn in the evaluations per employee based on anniversary date? I mean, that also makes for a lot of shuffling paperwork.
Right, I, I, I personally don't have a, a, you know, a personal opinion on that. I, I just have an opinion as far as I don't think that everybody should get like the same, you know what I mean, the same amount, because I, I personally feel that there are people that go above and beyond.
You mean the, the raise, the merit? Right, and I think that's what we're trying to establish is.
Can I make a suggestion, maybe, and I might get strangled by all the employees, but what if you guys would come up with a policy and you say, and you could say you want your evaluations done, but what if we would make it by a July first deadline? Um, that, not, not necessarily, but you guys would approve for the, the June twenty-six paycheck for all merit-based increases to go on it. That would be at six months. That'd give you some time, but you guys need to give some direction to your employees. I mean, they can start working on, or your supervisors, they can start working on the evaluation process of it, but how do they recommend what an employee should get? And the question that I had was, let's just say we're gonna, we'll say my department. If I had two employees and I had a dollar to give, can I give seventy-five cents to one and twenty-five to the other? Or is it just a maximum of twenty-five cents and I can give one, or fifty cents, one twenty-five cents and the other one the fifty cents? So those are the questions I've had from the department heads that I didn't really know how to answer.
Right.
You know, are they allotted X amount of dollars and then they divide that, or based upon their employees that are doing well? Is there going to be a maximum amount an employee can get if they're doing good versus one that's not performing quite as well? And then that would give you by some time.
That would be easy to determine on a small department, might not be as easy to determine in a big department.
But we budgeted fifty cents per head, so what we need to do first is establish, are we, are we not going to do cost of living? Because once we subtract that out of the equation, then we know what the remainder is, and then I think it should be a scale from there. Let's say, let's say you take ten cents out of that, or however, and you have forty cents left. You can do it by increments of ten cents, you can do two options, twenty cents or the whole forty cents. You know what I'm saying? Like if you, if you score satisfactory, you can get the twenty cents. If you're, um, above satisfactory, you know, outstanding, you can get the forty cents or not. Um, I think we need to establish first what we're going to cut out of that fifty cents, if we're going to just do a standard across the board. Because I know that's been the practice here. I mean, I'm glad to see it not be the entire fifty cents, because it makes it a little more fair for those who feel that they have a higher output than some of their coworkers, um.
I feel like I'm speaking over the top of you guys, so don't need to be.
When I worked for Mitchell County before, they allowed like a, a percentage of, uh, what your current rate of pay was. And you could give, say, if it was, I don't, I don't remember the percentage, it said if it was, they allowed five percent increase per employee, and then you did your evaluation, you could, the supervisor could say, you know, they get one percent or two.
Calculated a percentage of that.
Do it by a percentage there. But that probably wouldn't work well for you this first year while you're trying to get it started, but once it gets started.
Well, or we could, I mean, we could do the math, I mean, given the fifty cents.
On that, I also worked for Mitchell County, and I, like, my first year, um, I, I had gotten a raise, so say it was a dollar. Um, if you believed that you were doing, I mean, the supervisor thought you were doing very well, you could get your whole dollar in January. Say you needed some time to work, they might give you fifty cents, and then throughout the year you progressed, they'll give you the rest of the fifty cents. Or they'll give you twenty-five cents of that, does that make sense? So like you had throughout the year to show your improvement, and then therefore receive the rest of your raise.
And they did quarter the evaluation.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, I think we need to start out with, yeah, and I understand what you're saying, that makes sense, maybe that's where we could aim, but since we haven't done any.
Right.
I think we should do one this year. I like Dawn's idea, just set it to the middle of the year, and we did adjust the health insurance, so that that's not gonna change, correct?
Correct, on the employee side.
Right, but it does for us.
Yeah, so right now, the employees are paying more than ten percent, and the county's paying, you know, less than ninety, but in the, in Jan, or in July, it will revert back the other direction. But, yeah, you left it so the employees are just even keel.
I think if you're gonna do something, say, July first, I think the, the, uh, assessments need to be done for the first quarter, and then that gives.
Oh, it's some time to look at them and do the calculation.
Otherwise, they're gonna be coming in here the first of June, you're gonna be trying to review all those.
That's true. So we could do April first deadline, that would be the first quarter of the year, they have the next few months to get them done.
The only thing that I had thought about was if they were going to recommend dollar amounts, they probably would recommend at the time that they were doing the evaluation, that's why I thought.
I am personally of the mindset that I think the department head should just be responsible for doing the evaluations, and then we choose a scale by which we can assign the increase. Because I think if you start taking into account each department head's numbers that they want to assign to specific employees, that gets a little convoluted. I think we just need to have a scale and say, you know, if they're measuring within this portion of the scale, this is the dollar, or this is the numeric amount, you see what I'm saying?
That might get easier for the department heads.
Yeah, I think it takes the pressure off of them, too.
Right, you just go with their opinion.
Right, I mean, we're already trusting their opinion to look at the evaluation, so then to assign a number to it, I don't think that they should be assigning a specific number to each employee. I think we should be looking at the scale and saying they fall within this category.
I can't remember what the evaluation looks like.
It has the.
Is it kind of like a numeric, so that you guys can kind of see?
Yes, like a five, four, three, two, one, and then the self-evaluation, I think, is important, too.
Yes. Yes, right here, numeric.
Okay.
And then self-evaluation, just as like, good, fair, so.
Okay.
So we kind of have a plan of attack, then?
I would also like to reiterate, because some departments have been much better than others about this, and, and you weren't here when we established this, but we had said in the beginning of this year, we would like to hear from the department heads monthly. In my opinion, that helps us maintain an idea of what is transpiring in what season of the year. You know, we're not there as a part of that operation, so if we don't hear from them and get those kind of updates, it's kind of like, oh, well, that happened a few months ago, or, you know, and certain department heads have been in here consistently, and that helps, and others have not been at all. So if we're going to base our evaluations on their evaluations, and, and it's a three-way process, I think we need to encourage them to be at least giving some update reports. And some of them have even brought in statistical reports of what they've done, and I know they do that sometimes annually, but just to keep an i, an idea of what's current, it's mu, much more helpful. So if you, I don't know how you'd like to, how would you like to correspond with the department heads?
That was kind of my question, would, would you prefer I have like a monthly department head meeting and came to you guys and presented this stuff? Or would you prefer they presented it to you themselves? Um, I can do either way.
I think there is a motion, so they're supposed to come.
They come.
Okay.
They come themselves.
And maybe we just set a day where they all come.
Like maybe the first Monday of the month?
Like fifteen. Like a fifteen.
Do you guys have a certain Monday that's like a heavier load on you?
Depends on the time of the year and what's going on.
Okay.
Parts, sometimes, you know, parts of the year are really busy, parts of the year aren't.
I don't know why they wouldn't be staggered, I don't know why we need to see them all.
Yeah, because we want them all in one.
That's true.
You know, see, maybe one every mo- every week, you know?
Okay.
I don't know how many there are.
They're just not doing it on their own.
Where, we see Michael anyway, so we have the health.
He's been consistent.
And ambulance and the...
Well, I can speak with them all and kind of get them on a rotating schedule if you'd like.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I think Jerry thought he was supposed to be quarterly. Did you guys say plus quarterly?
I don't.
That's probably, that's probably sufficient. Yeah, he has the bus board too. But it's, but it's still nice to know what's going on. He did give us a count of runs and we were able to compare it to last year and...
So what would you like to do about cost of living?
Well, let's finish this one concept. I think maybe DeeDee, what you could do is send out mail, email, however you like to contact them all and just say, the expectation is that we get evaluations in by April 1st for your entire department. And please, you know, begin to attend of their choice, one Monday a month, to give a brief update. Just so that we can have a better concept of the current events in the department. Does that make sense? You could combine that into one mailing. Thank you. So, we said fifty cents total budgeted. Sounds like a squeaky chair.
I know.
It's a snore.
A snore.
That's her heart.
Did you say forty, uh, quarter is forty-four dollars a month?
The twenty-five cents is...
How many employees do we have?
Uh, there's probably seventy, seventy-two of them.
And I'm just gonna throw this idea in here while we're discussing this. We do have some funds that are kind of, I don't wanna use the wrong term here, but we have some additional funds that we have set aside for certain things. And I, you know, I'm not, we'll have to look statutorily as to what can be moved around. But I do think we need to reconsider what we're doing with EMS director as far as having it part-time versus full-time. And so, um, just for example, you know, we're gonna be saving a little bit of money if we're not giving out the merit-based raises until July 1st. So there's some cushion there, you know, as far as expenditures and what we have. Because the big concern was how are we gonna pay for the health insurance if we had, if we had that full-time position? But there's also some scheduling manipulation that can be done if you did have a full-time position where that person is taking on forty hours a week instead of twenty-four. So, that being said, um, I just wanna keep that in mind. If we start right off the top, you know, having twenty-five cents for every person that's not allocated until July 1st, you said that's forty-four a month per person, and how many did you say?
I would say seventy-two.
So that's thirty-one hundred dollars a month, you know, that's not going out until July 1st.
I will explain a little bit about that. So, budget laws allows county general to fund any le- or any fund within, that you're living for. But you cannot cross funds back. So your ambulance fund can't go to pay for something for the health department. Your health department fund can't go to pay something for the highway department. The highway department can't pay, but the county general can pay for any of the funds. So that's, that's what I would answer for that question. So if ever there was a time, it would have to come out of county general.
Okay, so my question is, all of the extra funds that we're gonna roll over as of Ju- as of December 31st, we put into our capital improvement? And that's, when do we amend that for its purpose, for its, we had, I think, like ten purposes?
Um, most of the time it's only amended when you want to amend it, but you can look at it yearly.
Because I'm just saying, that would be an option, correct? I mean, you could, you could...
What you would do with that is you would take it out of that and put it back into county general and then pay for it out of county general.
Could you put it directly into employee benefits or do you need to...
I think it has to come back to the fund that it was drawn from. So it would have to go back to county general and then you could use that money out of county, then you could say, you'll allocate the health plan out of county general.
Because we put what, like two hundred and...
Or you can transfer from the county general to the health fund. You just can't go directly from the capital approval fund to the, to the employee.
Okay, so it was two hundred and ten thousand total. And so if we were looking at a family plan, we estimated about twenty-four thousand, correct?
Yes.
So potentially...
And the other thing I didn't think about with the two hundred and ten thousand we transferred it until this weekend is you guys had council on aging money that was not dispersed, so part of that two hundred and ten thousand is going to be that money.
Was it, I think it was what, twelve thousand five hundred left? Is that what we did? We had twenty-four and then we distributed half of it, if I remember correctly.
I didn't remember for sure, so...
Does that sound right? Wasn't it four thousand and, well, how did we do that?
Four thousand and seven something.
An eight thousand or...
I think you're right, seven thousand something.
Okay, so eight and four is twelve, I don't know what we did with the extra. Well, no, we had twenty-four left.
Do you want to be guys have?
Or twenty-five, I can't remember.
I think you have, if you don't mind if I go up here. Because it should have had its line out of.
I thought it was twelve-five is what was left.
Fourteen thousand five hundred.
Fourteen-five.
So that will be part of that two hundred and ten, if you guys ever decide to do something with it.
Do you know where we are on the nursing home budget as far as paying what we allocated for the pro forma budget and the attorney fees? Because we may need to...
We've only paid one of the attorney billings and so I'm assuming there will be another one coming and we have not paid any of the auditor. And my, uh, or the, I, I call him auditor, but the person who did to do the budget. My thoughts was, was we'll take that out of the county general fund until we have no more money left or until March, and then after March, then we can take it out of Fund Forty-four. Or we can, and then the capital approval fund and take it out of that. And I don't remember how much was left in our budget, but I think it was quite a bit. It had eighteen thousand remaining.
Eighteen thousand in Fund Forty-four?
Uh, no, in the county general.
Oh.
So that would have been at the end of November, so whatever we have for December expenses.
That wasn't part of the two-ten that rolled over.
Uh, well, it would be included. I mean, I left a little bit of a cushion for prior year expenses and I left a little bit of cushion for that one, but...
What's the month, ten eighty hours, is that what it is?
Uh, year is twenty forty.
Twenty-five.
Or twenty-eight, sorry, twenty-eight when they need divided by twelve. And they normally always try to do even dollar amounts for the department heads that are salaries and that's why we save a little bit of dollars, but we get the forty-three something, something odd.
Well, it appears that if we give twenty-five cents, that will take about half of what we budgeted for. I guess on the downside of that is that facing increases in social security that are, were projected or were told and fall, it's about two point two percent, I think, which the twenty-five cents is gonna be less than, that'll be around two percent, not quite. The total that we budgeted appears to be about three percent raise in, across the board. If we did it, we'd have a three percent raise. You're right, we will gain a little traction by delaying some until July. But if we put it on increments of five cents or ten cents, we probably can do it if we give a twenty-five cent across-the-board raise. I guess one of my feelings about the cost of living is that it does go up and I think that's something we have to be mindful of. We have to keep our wages, our base wage attractive. And that's the only way we change our base rate is by putting this cost of living increase in.
Now, for us to think about increasing the, how we've been doing it in the past where everybody gets the same cost of living and we increase that base wage, is now you have employees that have been here ten years making the same amount as employees that have been here one year. So at least doing the merit increase will...
Yeah, it's sorry.
Yeah, differentiating that a little bit.
Well, last year it was a whole fifty cents. I mean, I, I think there's more incentive for people to want to reach that entire fifty cents, which they're capable of doing through their work instead of just through putting up with staying or however you wanna look at that. I mean, a lot of people just kind of stick to the same job knowing that if there is a regular increase, then they just stick with it. And that's not, I don't think we really wanna promote, I think we just wanna, um, reward based on, I mean, I think that's the concept of the merit-based raise in general, is to reward based on the output and to have your employees want to be here and want to be productive because they know that it's gonna gain them something, not just because they put their time in. So I'm not opposed to a cost of living raise. I know our health insurance plan went up and like you said, there's gonna be greater, um, well, there's, there's a greater income tax, uh, state income tax now this year too, so that's definitely a, could plays a part.
I'd move that we increased salaries twenty-five cents as of December the twenty-sixth, was it, or s-?
Yes.
With the understanding that there will be merit increases available first of July. I would also include in my motion that the county commissioners be exempt from the cost of living increase.
I'll second the motion. Ready for a discussion?
Indirectly related to this, I guess what we haven't discussed is, are we going to have... Okay, so the, my understanding of the cost of living is going to be across the board even for elected officials, except for us?
Except for us.
Right, so the merit-based increase, is that going to apply to elected officials? And if so...
I think that's something we're going to have to decide in the future, how you're going to do that. I guess the elected officials primarily can increase those salaries by using their budget.
But we don't want to encourage them to manipulate the...
We don't want to, we don't want to encourage them, yes, but that's why I think we have to have a very good working relationship with all the elected officials between ourselves, that we're all working together. And I don't think that's been abused in the past, but I think we need to be cognizant of that when we do the merit pay. So, you know, we may be looking for elected officials. I mean, they're not gonna be evaluated, we may need to adjust wages then too.
I ask on the department heads, who does their evaluation?
We will need to do the...
You do, okay, all right.
And we need to get started on this, yes.
Do you guys need the paperwork and all that from me? Do you want me to email that, I'll see you?
Please.
Okay.
I'll need a copy, please.
Okay, no problem.
Ready for a discussion? Not all the first hour.
Real quick question while you're on this topic. EMS is a little different animal than most county departments in the fact that we have volunteers, part-time and, and full-time employees. What do you expect for evaluations as far as part-time and volunteer employees? Because when they do come in and cover, like say if we're going on a transfer, they come into the station and cover, they get paid an hour, they wait for that. So I just wondered how that's gonna affect their increase in pay?
Well, I'd say they need to be evaluated too. Because they're gonna get paid increase off the evaluation, that would somehow be evaluated.
Can I just make a suggestion? Okay, the volunteers have a, a pay resolution. So, I mean, we could still evaluate with them, but there are, there's just very few volunteers. What if we just move them to temporary part-time employees, so you use them when you need them and make them employees? And do it away with that? Do all of them come in? I know Terry, you didn't, but you're not taking time.
I don't go in.
Our, a lot of the volunteers won't come in. But if they respond, they get an hour's wait, they're gonna call.
Right, which is based upon the pay resolution.
So, when we budgeted, are the, did we count those as...
Uh, no.
It just comes out of that budget of their, okay, yeah.
And I know my mom doesn't come to the station.
Is that under contract, is that under contractual that we pay that out of?
No, we pay it out of payroll. So the forty-one hundred line item that comes up.
Okay.
It just, they have a pay resolution that you guys set in the last, it's been a while since we've updated it, uh, which we probably should have looked at. But, so when they're volunteers, so they're taking call outside, they get X amount of dollars per hour and then when they do go on a run, they get so many dollars per run.
Okay.
But they don't get holiday time, they don't get anything like that, they just get pure, pure time, so...
Probably does, I wouldn't worry about that.
Yeah, so we can, well, we can figure that out. But it probably wouldn't hurt to, to evaluate the volunteers.
No, I think that's helpful. I mean, it, it lets us know what their value is, really, I mean. And it's the same concept, I mean, some are more willing to come more often or put themselves out there or, or do take on extra tasks. Um, while you're here, since we are gonna be looking to you for leadership in the department temporarily at least, is there a, do you have a list of chores, so to speak, that anyone or everyone is supposed to perform during their shift?
There, there has been a list in the past, but it's not pushed by any means. And that's one of my, one of my things that I wanna get on, you want it to be more specific things? There be a list of things each day that you do?
It used to be, say, Monday was vacuuming the meeting room, Tuesday was bathrooms, sweeping mop the bathrooms in the back hallway. Wednesday was clean the kitchen, um, Thursday was like clean the front hallway. And, I mean, there was bunkers, I guess it was vacuuming meeting room and bunkers. And then Friday was the bay day, we always had to clean, pluck trucks, sweep and mop the bay to make sure all that was clean.
But our, our...
That's what happened in the past.
So, just given that hypothetical situation... So just given that hypothetical situation, are certain employees always working though on a Wednesday? Or always, I mean, I'm just wondering if that's...
The way our schedule rotates, everybody works every day but Wednesday. Wednesday's our part-time day.
Okay.
In three, in a three-week period, I work six of seven days.
Every certain day of the week, you'll still, okay. So that makes sense that you assign it by the day which task, okay? Because I was just wondering, I mean, thinking, well, maybe that's why some of it doesn't get done if someone's always stuck on bathroom day.
No, no.
Okay.
Well, and my plan is to, to delegate some tasks as far as putting one person in charge of this and one person in charge of that and split up some of these duties to make them more evenly spread across the board. So Shado's not gonna always get stuck in the inventory and start doing a month of inventory, which we have not done in the past. Basically restock, updates, and that's it. But to implement a month of inventory, it'd be done on all three fronts.
And you have your own policy book? Is that what Brett Kingen was referring to when he said there was a policy about stating? I, I do not have that.
Policy about stating what?
About there, he, we had received correspondence from Brett and we asked him about doing annual inspection and if that's coming up, what needs to be done. And he said there's a policy in the book regarding if there is no director, one needs to be appointed within so many days.
That's a state.
Board of EMS.
Oh, that's a state, okay.
Yeah, there's actually a resolution over a...
Do you, do we have a Lincoln County policy book for EMS?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have that.
Well, we have, we have a protocol book, but we also have, we also have a policy book. I would assume it's the same one everybody has. I don't know.
As an employee handbook?
Yeah, the employee handbook. I don't know if there was added, things added to it, like for EMS. I'm not sure.
Sorry.
Because I know, because I know there's a thing in there about uniforms and stuff like that, so.
It just wanted to shine on me.
You've got an idea. You gotta tell me something.
With that being said, the handbook has to be amended at some point in time. So we know, we didn't get that accomplished last year, hopefully. And I did not forget, I have emailed all the departments about what their cleaning was. And at some point in time I'll get on the agenda. I think I've gotten most of their replies back, so.
How they're being cleaned or who's taking it, okay.
So I, I didn't forget to, I know you said you wanted it on the agenda, get it on the agenda.
So then what we need to do next is figure out a scale, which if you can send us those evaluation forms and we can work on our own, that we need to do for department heads. But then we need to figure out a scale between ourselves as far as, you know, ten cents, fifteen cents, twenty-five cents, something like that. And where people may fall in that category for their raise as of July first.
I was, did you guys pass the twenty-five percent merit?
Twenty-five cents, an hour.
Twenty-five cents, I mean, an hour. Did you also do the colon, you were talking about a colon?
That wasn't.
Cost of living line.
That was.
That is a cost of, okay, I'm sorry.
Right, so when we, when we formulated the budget for two thousand nineteen, for each employee, we allotted fifty cents total. So we gave the twenty-five as the cost of living.
Okay, that's a cost of...
The other twenty-five will be as of July first, it'll start.
It'll be merit, merit type thing.
Right.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Some may get ten, some may get twenty, or however we, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. And they haven't done this, as far as I know, in your terms, correct? You haven't done merit-based. So it'll be new for all of us at the same time.
So while Randy's speaking, I'm just making the thing. When do you guys want to change the realm next week? Normally we try to do it halfway through the meeting, which would fit us, you know, if we were scheduled eight to one or ten to one, it's like at eleven thirty. Do we wanna pick a time that we'll change out board members?
Ten oh one. I think you gotta stay until twelve, Terry.
Normally Michael's on the agenda at eleven, we could push him back to eleven thirty. We could do it at eleven, do the swearing-in regardless.
Well, I think if you don't do it, if you wait until then, the meeting's gonna be over. So I think if you're gonna do it, unless you're gonna have, I mean, I don't care.
I mean, we'll have reorganization, so like once you get sworn in...
Do you have anything on the agenda yet?
I have not done the agenda, that's why, and I had the newspaper calling and asking and I just, it throws us into a round. Normally we've done it at noon and then the afternoon they've cut, the new member has taken over. So just to kind of figure it out.
Well, there's no sense, if, if there's not gonna be much on the agenda, there's no sense sitting in here for two hours doing nothing and then changing to the new board.
So what if I would say eleven, I'll have Michael come at eleven thirty and in between eleven and eleven thirty, you guys can reorganize. Now with that public building commission, because Terry will be going off of that, we probably should have a meeting to where you guys could approve the past minutes.
So let's just put that up.
Schedule in before eleven.
Yeah, just put that up with our call to order, agenda, minutes, and, but minutes of both.
Okay. And then we'll get that taken care of. Then Randy will start, we'll swear you in at eleven and then as soon as you're sworn in, then you guys could do your board reorganization. And then I think that's it and we'll have you at eleven thirty, is that okay?
I believe that should work.
Okay, thank you.
You have anything else, Dawn?
No. The only other thing I had was the council on aging, but we can discuss that later, unless you wanna discuss it now.
You have also something about the telephone line. Let's just wait and we'll have them first.
The telephone line is just, we're doing a meeting on the sixteenth at ten AM here. So that's the date that worked out well for all the department heads. So any board member that wants to come can come. If there's gonna be more than two, I just need to know, just notify everyone and the people that have asked, so.
What's the sixteenth?
It's a Wednesday.
I won't be able to, I have a meeting in Junction City that day.
At ten. And you don't have to come, it's basically they're gonna kind of slate the department heads who is happening and why we need to do something. Maybe we can figure out what's best to move forward.
Who is, who is coming?
Robert from Eagle Communications is coming. And then Leon, who has our phone system, is gonna come. I figure he's a non-biased party that will help the, the department heads understand. Because we could like do a hosted system where we go out and do all of that line people or... But it's like online and so if the internet's down, you have the phones. There's so many different options of your ways. I just wanna have the department heads help me come up with a plan of attack so I don't get any bids for it. So I'm making sure that I'm asking the same, the same types, so.
Okay, Michael, let's go ahead. Morning.
I've started driving pile this morning on one oh five. So hopefully in the next couple of days, they will be done with pile driving and we can go ahead and sheet the bridge and get it closer to being open. I believe they're gonna do some pier pouring over on the Goldenrod Bridge this week also. So they're making progress. Looks like we got some decent weather here for a week or two, so. Hopefully both bridges, we can make some good progress on. And I received a phone call last week from a Cody Smith, who has requested a section of road be closed. And this would be three hundredth Road south of Bison. And I believe it dead ends where the state right-of-way is on I seventy. It's a, currently a non-maintained open right-of-way.
Two landowners or...
Yes.
You said it's a dead end?
Yes.
It's this, this...
Yes, it dead ends into I seventy, they're yes.
How many landowners?
Well, there's two. Call who the other one was.
That's not that road down there that goes by Dags where the billboards are, is it?
I think that was right on the county line, wasn't it?
Three, ten.
Yeah, because there's... I believe it's the Jay Kissick Trust that's on the other side, on the west side of that road.
But you haven't talked to them?
No, I have not.
Well, I've talked to them for proceeding.
Is he a landowner?
Is that Smith? Yes. He's got it on the west side. I believe he's got three quarters of set in there vertically.
Yeah, and whether there's farm ground though.
I don't believe there's any farm ground for either one of them, it should all be grass. Yeah, I think we need to contact the Kissick Trust and make sure that...
Yeah, it should be easy if they agree.
You say Jay Kissick Trust? Yeah, that's what's in the book. Upper Jay Kissick Trust. Want me to contact them or do we wanna do the process we do from mail-out from...
I think we'll contact before we mail out.
Okay.
I can give Bev a call and find out who's in charge of that trust. Because isn't that Jay? Isn't that, I think that. Because I'm not sure who, Todd, whether Todd is running that, doing that now or not. But I can call Bev, I, I think I have her phone number. You said that's three hundredth Road, that's correct. I'll try and get that done in the next day or so.
That'd be great.
Speaking of contacting people, did you ever get a hold of Brian Taylor?
I have not yet. Hopefully things will slow down a little bit here now that we got Bob back and...
Proceed.
Hopefully stay back there though.
What'd you say that guy's name, Brian Smith?
Cody.
Cody Smith?
Yeah.
It's on the top left on this one.
In the news.
Oh, okay, alright.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I've been trying to catch up, going all the stuff from Michael, word about what we had going and stuff here, so. Trying to get figured out where we need to go. All some material out here to bridge here, one oh five, there to fix our ramp and stuff and then get the piling drove so they can reach on the cross. Some of the guys are out blading on some of the roads. Yeah, working on a couple of pipe, I guess it washed out or something of waste there. Just wondering, I didn't get, hadn't got up that way yet, so. Check it out, what we need to do with it. Other than that, I don't have a lot.
I know something I wanted to update you. Last week we did the budget amendments with the leftover funds when we rolled them over for the end of the year. And so there was, I believe it was a hundred and eighty thousand and we split ninety and ninety between special machinery and special road. Is that what it was called, Don, special road? So my thought was, particularly with the special county road, Don said we hadn't really funded that in that manner for quite a few years. My thought with those particular funds is we could proceed with getting some bids on doing some tough pointing and some stonework on some of these stone arch bridges. I feel like it could only behoove us to just at least get the numbers on paper and get some people interested who would do that kind of work. And we could pick a region, you know, and that would be up to you, where the most need is and where we could have, you know, a specific geographical location and say there are six bridges within this area and have that firm or whoever, whoever's going, that particular individual. I mean, I don't know what we have to do as far as getting someone who's bonded and, you know, able to perform that kind of work. But even if it was going to take them a year, at least we could get all of that on paper and see what we need to spend. And out of that fund, we could at least pay them for, for their process of creating all of the plans. Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, they may give us a bid, just to give us a bid. But if we do need specific plans, some engineering plans, et cetera, we could fund it through that. And that may not be enough to cover what needs done in that particular area, but it's at least a start. And so now we have some funds set aside to do that. I would really like to see that get started. Because it's gonna take a while just to prep all of it before we even get some of that material purchased or whatever we may need, you know, for the actual work to be done. So I don't know how far ninety thousand will go, but I, I think it's a good start.
We did quite a few bridges, probably.
I think we need to...
As far as tough pointing.
Right, if you guys, if you particularly could assign, you know, by intensity, you know, this one really needs a lot or this one needs the, the least. We could even start from the least needing to the most and get some of those smaller projects done out of the way. We know they're good for a decade or two.
Yeah.
This month, we got a pretty good list in here, the ones that the guys have given that stuff and the ones I've seen that we could do something to work on, so.
I mean, I know in, in my area, that upper northwest quadrant has quite a few. I don't know how that compares to some of the other areas. But there are quite a few in there that could be salvaged and if we don't work on it now, we're just gonna look at more costs later.
Yeah, this month we should be receiving our biennial bridge inspections and they should be notified on those as far as the bridges go. They won't have our culvert size, but...
Well, and you guys could just amend that list. You could, right, work with that and make your own list and, I mean, who knows? We may be able to get six or seven of them done just with that amount of money if there were minimal repairs. And I would like to note, there's, along that same line, there are some issues with tree trimming. I've just been observing over the last couple of months, particularly when we were talking about the...
I always forget the number, sixty-five bridge, OS sixty-five?
I mean, we have trees growing that their roots are now up under the foundations of the, the wing walls. And, you know, some of those trunks are several, several years old and they need to be taken care of because it's just causing us future damage. So I don't know how you assign tree trimming issues. I mean, I know once in a while you'll have a crew and that goes for several miles on one particular road. But the, the trees that are growing up under and in the waterways, they really need to be taken care of on some of these bridges because I think they're just causing us issues that we're gonna be paying for later.
I had them working on some of them. Last year, cutting some out was growing out from under the bridges. Hadn't been, had anything done for a long time, so. Trying to get everyone around. It's, takes a while to catch all of them, but...
I know it can't all be done at once, but I would like to see a plan of action. I know you use, you know, like your truck drivers will, will help cut when they're not driving, et cetera, because you're not hauling gravel. And I know that you have to work some things around, but, I mean, either you need to require the motor grader operators to give you a list and, and identify particularly what needs done or what a priority is, or you need to do it and then tell them that they... I mean, it has to go one way or the other. Either there needs to be an identification on the outlying individual, or you need to identify it, and then the work needs to be done by the outlying individual. One or the other.
This time of year, we usually try to address most of our tree cutting. We have not got a lot done due to the conditions of the ditches and the safety of it and whatnot. But I think that we're going to start swinging that way with this nicer weather, so.
Now, do you supply each rural station, I'll call it, with their own tree trimming equipment? Like, I know we had a, we had a saw stolen at one point in Vesper or somewhere. So each, so when two motor grader operators share a station, I'll call it, what do you call them?
Outlying shop.
Yeah, the shop. When they share that, are, are they all provided with their own tree trimming equipment there? I mean, is that the idea?
Yeah, they have a chainsaw for each shed.
And so if they needed additional machinery to, you know, move things, whether it be a skid steer or something like that, is that something they can request and have?
Yeah, like I say, they kind of take care of it on their own, but we try to send out, like I say, truck drivers and stuff and I bet they send out them to help different locations and help out, so.
But ultimately, you're kind of saying you want them to take the initiative to say, this is a project we can do on our own. We have our own tree. We can request an additional piece of equipment. We can schedule this between our two drivers because we don't need to blade on these two days or something like that.
Yeah.
In theory, that works best. You know, it's just one of those daily maintenance things that they're not blading, that they should be able to go take care of.
Well, how often do you think they're doing that?
Probably not often.
Not, and if, some of them do and some don't, like I say.
Okay. So how do, how do we get that expectation more even across the board?
It's hard to kind of do it all worked in. So I'm a lot better by taking it on their own to do that stuff than others, so. Keep after them, but you need to do this when you got time.
Well, we did withhold twenty-five cents on the fifty cent raises for merit-based pay, so maybe that needs to be explained to everyone that, you know, they're going to be evaluated. We did ask that you will have your evaluations done. You'll hear from DeeDee, but that you'll have them done like the first quarter of the year, so that by the middle of the year, we could assign a numeric increase to each employee based on how they're being evaluated. So maybe that's something you could have a department meeting about or explain, send out a memo in their paycheck. I don't know what the answer is.
They're working on evaluations. I've got about, like, about half the employees.
Okay. Do they know that we're planning on doing merit-based raises this year?
It's been discussed, the possibility of.
Okay.
This is the first we've known that it's going to happen.
Right. So now you at least know from us that that's going to happen?
They've heard the probability of it several times.
Okay. And I would just ask that you be extremely blunt and honest with us when it comes to those because we want to encourage them to have higher output based on knowing that they're going to be rewarded for it financially.
Well, I told them, if we're doing these evaluations, this will be part of your basis for early raise later on. So what I put down here is going to affect that, so you need to be looking to do what you need to do better, improve on it right now, so. Okay.
So that will be a twenty-five cent cost of living and twenty-five cents that will be discretionary based on merit.
Okay.
Very well.
Enjoy, I personally.
Yes. Yeah, it would be for the, the June 26 date check, right? Does that make, or no?
It wouldn't be for the whole year. Is it going to be retroactive for a year?
No, no.
It'll be for the second half of the year. Yeah.
Is that a plan that you...
As of July 1st.
Are considering doing in the future like that, where you'll get like...
I believe so.
Okay, twenty-five cents at the first of the year potentially, and then twenty-five cents up to in merits come mid-year.
Well, we did that this year because we don't have any evaluations yet.
Get process started.
Okay.
Since we have no evaluation, we have one department that's finished.
Understand.
Yeah, so then, once we get all of them, then we can apply that to everyone's paycheck at the same time. Whether they get ten cents or twenty-five cents based on how their performance has been and what your evaluations say, then they'll get that for the remainder of this year, which gives us a little bit of a cushion with what we budgeted for a total of fifty cents. So the cost of living is effective as of December, well, the next pay, the next payroll that's coming. So that cost of living comes in for the whole year. And there was a motion to make it twenty-five cents, which is fifty percent of what we budgeted. So, you know, that could change, or maybe next year, it won't be done in the middle of the year. Maybe it will be done by the end of the year. I don't know. I guess we have to discuss that.
I was just curious if there's a plan in place yet.
Yeah. But even if we decided to stick with the middle of the year, at least what they get this July continues through, for a whole year.
Yes, no, I understand.
And then next July, you know, that may actually be a good idea.
I'm sure there'll be questions, so if I have some answers for them, they'd appreciate it, so.
Right. Yeah, cost of living effective immediately. And then July 1st would be their additional raises, up to another twenty-five cents.
So in theory, we should be able to save on our budget.
Twenty-five cents apiece for six months.
For six months, and then even beyond the merit increases if they do not achieve it, so.
Correct. I'm sure there'll be a little bit of leeway there with some not gaining the twenty-five, the whole twenty-five cent.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Did you happen to look at any, you were talking about replacing trucks about a month ago. Did you look at any comparable used vehicles?
I have not had a chance to do that.
Okay.
I don't know where to start looking for a used setup that would be worth, look, going after, if you know what I mean.
Right, but you did find that chip sealer that was a good deal. So there's something potentially, even if we don't replace all of them brand new, and some of them are new and some of them are used, I think we need to look at having a little bit of flexibility there. Another thing that was brought to my attention, are we advertising for the sale of our equipment before we actually post it for sale? I mean, I assume, I think in the two years I've been here, you've only used Purple Wave, correct?
That's correct.
We haven't done any other, well, we're talking about doing a private sale now to Sylvan, or I don't know if you want to call it private, but a, a sale directly.
Governmental sale.
Okay. So before we list things to Purple Wave, are we doing any kind of notification? Or, Don, do you know, are we required to? That's kind of the question that's...
I believe Purple Wave advertises.
So that meets our requirement when we sell them to them.
I don't know if you were in your position that you're in now, but there are some people that have purchased county equipment, even locally. How is that done? Do you know? Is that...
It used to be done with sealed bids, I believe.
Yeah, years ago.
So you list the machine and then you ask for sealed bids?
I believe that's...
Yeah, they advertise, advertise the equipment.
It's got to be.
They took sealed bids, but that was before Purple Wave came along. Once Purple Wave came along, they used to sell those old patrol cars for two or three hundred bucks on a sealed bid. And they've gone to fifteen hundred, two thousand on Purple Wave, so.
And you, and as a private person, you can bid on Purple Wave?
Oh, yeah, anybody can.
Yeah, anyone can bid. We got to get a number, but you got to be registered.
Thank you.
When I know their stuff up, I try to put, like, when he tells you, I try to put it in the minutes, so then that way, if a resident wants to know, they could go to the Purple Wave and be seen as the advertiser.
I think Purple Wave lots of times puts an ad in the paper.
And I'll put everything that you guys sell, that Michael has, has said to throw papers in.
Yeah.
So then that way...
In the minutes, you mean?
Yeah, hopefully that alerts people who are reading.
I believe they put an ad in our local paper.
Yeah, they're usually...
Pretty sure they do.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
When you, once you list, then they go to your local paper?
Yeah.
Did you happen to have a follow-through conversation with Steve Boer about getting maintenance records to compare the graders or, just out of curiosity?
I visited with him a little bit, and I got some information off of his motor grader. I just have not heard back from anyone on a value to give them or, you know, and... It's going to be hard for him to tell us a, an actual price, you know, they look at trade-in pricing and stuff like that, which isn't the same as what we may want to ask, you know? It's just going to be...
What are you considering doing? Taking theirs and then listing it?
No, no. No, we'll dispose, we'll dispose of ours to them for whatever you guys agree on, and them disposing of theirs will be their responsibility.
We don't want to be the metal man on their antique grader.
Steve was just wondering if there was a way that they could kind of give them an idea on what theirs was. We've had them here before. So, you know, that's where we're at on that. All right, anything else this week?
I'm pleased, huh?
All righty, thank you all.
Have some more fortune.
We will. I'm ready for it.
Would you come in to say yes, Jennifer?
Um, yes. I needed an executive session on the issue of Lincoln Park Manor for about fifteen minutes.
Is this additional correspondence from Mr. Hay?
Yes. Do you want my little sheet sheet?
Yes. I'm, I have yours somewhere, but I'm up to date. Oh, he has one right here.
Do you have one?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I moved to recess into executive session. Jennifer, a time?
Fifteen minutes, I think would be sufficient.
For fifteen minutes? To discuss new correspondence from Attorney Hay on Lincoln Park Manor pursuant to KSA. Seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, two B. Number two for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Commission and attorney. And if I may, the only reason I'm saying that is not to exclude, but it's been brought to our attention that if you have attorney-client privilege, it has to be the attorney and the current client.
Go next.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Not, probably say aye.
Thank you.
I didn't ask you to contact him because, you know, I wouldn't have talked if you guys weren't interested in me asking him to contact and find out what it would cost, but... You know, the doors is one thing, but the, the walls above the doors and all that is what concern is, and I just really think it needs to be done right because of who we're dealing with.
Well, my concern is we already paid seventy-seven thousand dollars to the engineer.
But those were the preliminary drawings and stuff. There's a difference between preliminary drawings and actual construction drawings and stuff.
I, I know, but I'm saying for that kind of money, I would expect that they would have the correct input on the fire doors. We were just discussing, there's a fire door issue.
There weren't, they didn't do any construction drawings on them. There's all the preliminary assessments and all that stuff. Each opening is going to have to be assessed. You got to do what you want to do. That's just my recommendation. Like I say, I'm, I'm not going to be here, so, but my experience in construction phases and stuff, I think you better do it that way.
What he's saying is that the company that we awarded the bid to wants engineering, structural, architectural input on the fire rating for the walls and the surrounding area where these doors are going in. So what is the difference here in the pricing that they're saying, I mean, what if we just went with the highest rated throughout? Is that higher than the bid that they gave us?
No, but...
So then I don't understand what the problem is.
That's only covering the door. That's what they're saying.
Right, but that's all we bid to them was to replace the doors, not to come through and do anything structurally.
But the wall has to have... The doors, the wall has to have a fire rating. It's an open, and it has to have a fire rating too, is my understanding, is what they're saying.
So then can't we contact the fire marshal and have them come and do...
They don't do that.
Well, then who would be the authority on that?
Well, they can write you up if they discover something that's not right, but...
But you can't request an inspection?
Is there some inspector after you that certifies that once it's done or something? Clear? Well, they, they, they come and look at their part of it. They don't engineer it. I mean, it just... You have to have some engineering drawings and then everybody go out with that, is that what you're saying? They have to assess the opening and say that, yeah, it's, it's all right. And then when they actually, after they do the construction, say after that, then is somebody there to certify that this complies with some rule or law? Yeah, they just come in and check your records to see if it's... If it's certified or if the doors had the tags and different things like that on them. Okay. But they don't actually do. Nobody certifies the completion of that work, though? Saying that these guys did the correct job on...
The company, like, who would certify what the company did?
Say you put the doors in there, and somebody says, then some government guy convinced of this, certified for whatever?
No, because they're basically following the specs of what we told them to bring in as a bid. And so then they just performed the work. But my concern is, we've already paid over seventy thousand dollars to an engineering firm who went through the entire structure of the building and was supposed to do...
If they didn't do construction drawings on it.
And I would think for seventy thousand dollars, we could simply request that for the doors to be completed.
Well, you can request it. You can request it. Now, if you didn't have that originally in your contract with them to do it, right?
Well, here's the problem. We've never received one drawing from him. We have not, I, there is nothing that I have received for seventy thousand dollars. Not, not a piece of paper or anything, just his assessment verbally. I mean, Don, we don't have those schematics that he provided as far as what he gave to the...
He brought in a bunch of stuff that I don't know what happened to it.
I don't think he left the...
He did not leave a thing.
...on the, on the desk that was...
No, and then when the, when the thresholds weren't appropriate for walker use, we paid for two sets of thresholds. So I'm not very pleased with the services provided there.
Well, find somebody else then, but you need to do something on it. I don't give a damn what you do. Like I say, I'm only going to be here for a week, so you figure it out, but you need to get somebody, you need to get a professional involved in this thing, I'm telling you.
And what I'm saying is, there's already one involved who needs to be accountable for his seventy thousand dollars that he is receiving. I'm sure there are plenty of firms that would love that deal. I'll call them.
If I'm, I'll do it for free. I'm sure there's a lot of people who would like to know about it.
She's been paid, or at least most of it has been paid.
We got anything? We got anything else today?
Uh, there's one thing I would like to at least just preliminarily discuss. There doesn't have to be a solution to it today. In fact, I may need to get some more information to verify what I've been asked to address. But Terry, since you're, you do go to hospital board meetings?
Do what?
You've been going to the hospital board meetings as commissioner? Um, I have been asked to verify whether or not there is a conflict of interest between one of the appointed members in the hospital board. You know, we as the commission appoint the hospital board members. And the hospital board oversees the financial aspects of the hospital and hires the administrator, et cetera. It's been brought to my attention that there may be a person who we've appointed to the board who gets financial compensation from the hospital. So they're serving as a board member and receiving a contractual, um, compensation for services provided the hospital. And so that would clearly be identifiable as a potential conflict of interest because there's monetary exchange there between someone who's making decisions as a board member and then receiving compensation from that same pool of money. Um, you know, I, I don't know how thoroughly we've looked into that in the past, but I, I would like to know, you know, is that what's going on? Do we need to replace that particular member so that we're not condoning that type of behavior?
I think that was looked into at the time that the person was appointed and he's not an employee and he cannot vote on anything that has to do with his contract.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would give him clearance, so.
Okay. So it is a contract, then?
It's a contract, yeah. But that was looked into before he was appointed.
There was also some concern that there were some executive sessions recently with the hospital board and it looks like there were some actions taken in the executive session because there was nothing done in the open meeting, or at least it wasn't reported by the paper in the open meeting, that these actions were taking place. So we've had some employees of the hospital board be given extended leave, paid leave time. Um, and it looks like this was done as an action in an executive session. Now, my understanding is there's some, there, there is some exemption from coma for the hospital. I'm not sure how that particularly works. I don't even know if you were, you're not considered a board member, are you? Okay, so you wouldn't have been in on executive sessions?
Typically, no. Typically, they. They say their executive session is to the end of the meeting and I leave, so I don't know what they do. After they come out of the executive session, so I, I, I don't think I've ever. In the last few years anyhow, I don't think I've ever been there when they came out of an executive session. Normally they have them reserved for the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So I, I couldn't answer that question for you.
Do you know, do you know any of the particulars about their required compliance with GANSS's open meetings or open records? Okay.
I would assume that anything has to do with HIPAA.
Right, no, not that, just, um, compensation and just, you know, decisions made by the board for employees. Or, or those, or if the financial transactions, like, let's say that contract, if that is subject to Cora, I don't know, but I'll be, I'll put one in as a request and see.
I would say it is, but I don't know.
Okay. I just wanted to at least address that while you were still here, since you're the one that's been following that, that group. And then the other group, John, you had on here was the Council on Aging?
Yes.
And you had a list of people who wanted to.
You talking to them?
What? Council on Aging appointments.
Yeah, I understand, no, I didn't, was I supposed to talk to somebody? Slipped that through me. If I was.
We have District Two, I get, are they, these by commission districts then?
Yes.
Is that what this means? So District Two, Kathy Moss and.
I, I don't believe they're by commission districts. I think they have their own districts.
No, they changed, they changed their bylaws and they went to one from each district and two at-large or something.
This says at-large, Jeannie Freeze, and then District Three, Jeannie Freeze.
Uh, that's just.
That's on this one, at-large on this one and then District Three.
Yeah, she's on there twice, so one of those districts.
Oh, they're both on here twice, at-large, Kathy Moss.
But he brought one in and laid it, and then he brought the other one back, but then, um.
Yeah, but they're sending it.
May I address the council on this?
I guess so.
Whoever you are, commissioners. A few months ago, Terry, you were at the council meeting when we talked about what positions would be open. I just, as for future reference, I think it would be a good idea to keep track of the commission, the commissioners, to keep track, and I'll have one for you too, Randy. Um, of when somebody comes in and when their term is up.
Needs to go to Don, because we have, we have a folder that has that stuff in it, all the appointments.
Okay, I know, because at one time, we have a problem with one having a three-year term and not just a two-year term because of whatever happened. So if you'll read through here, Jan, who was the president, can no longer be on the council. And Liz Winkler did not apply to be on, so she's not on it. Charlene DeWitt, and it tells, it tells their district that they're in too on here, on this information.
According to the commission district, is that what this?
According to the commission district. They passed bylaws maybe four or five months ago and they made it like the exact map that you have of your District Three. You would have two representative district, one would have two, Representative District Two would have two representatives. And there'd be, number seven would be an at-large member. Uh, and so this tells you who is there now and who can apply and how much longer they can apply. Charlene has one more year, Charlene Watson has one more year, and then that position becomes open and she cannot be on it anymore. Charlene DeWitt is off of it now. Nancy Nitch can apply, I'm assuming she's applied for another two-year thing, she should have an application in there on a letter. And Judy Alvers can apply for another two-year. It's the second year of her first term, so she can apply for another two-year term for District One. And Bob has, uh, hit end of his second term, he can apply for another two-year term. And Marge Snyder, this was her end of her one, half of her first two-year term. And at the end of twenty nineteen, she can apply for another two-year term. So I hope, you know, if there's any clarification on that, you need time to read through it to understand that I understand. Um, and that the bylaws state that there's two representatives from each commission district with one at-large member. Members have to live in the district they are representing. There should be a total of members of seven on the council. The openings are to be advertised with the hope that candidates will be considered a fair, inclusive understanding by the council. Roberts Rules of Order were adopted as the parliamentary procedure and applicants to the council are requested to know and practice parliamentary procedures in order to conduct their business.
Were these openings advertised?
Yes, they were advertised, and I understand that a person.
By the council?
They were advertised in, and I have a copy of the advertisement. It was supposed to run two weeks in a row with a date where they were supposed to be turned in to the president. At the time that they were supposed to be turned in at the November meeting, there had only been two applicants. Uh, one had applied from District Three as either a District Three representative and/or a, uh, at-large. And the other applicant.
Was that Jeannie Freeze?
No. Uh, the other applicant had applied for District One, but she doesn't live in District One, she lives in District Three. And I hoped that that had been corrected. I don't know if it had.
Well.
The only two, we only have two, two plus Charlene Watson's continuation is all, is all that we received.
And that was my fear. And, and I think that, you know, as county commissioners, you have time to, before you decide these kinds of things, that you wanna be fair in your appointments and people that apply by the rules, whatever those are, or, uh, the bylaws, which, what the bylaws state. The bylaws have always stated that a term is two years from the beginning of time. This is not, I'm not here to say whether or not there should be a council on aging even, okay? Or an area coordinator, that's not what I'm doing. All I'm trying to do is share the information as it has been presented in the last two and a half years that I've been there going.
Right.
Uh, so I wanted to make clear who would be on here. There is no automatic.
Renewal.
Automatic renewal.
Got it.
And, and that's why they were just trying to make accountability be there so that you weren't always relying on the minutes, which you should be able to rely on minutes because they are your record that can go to court. Uh, they are your official documentation.
Let's still, it's clear, because we have the same person for District Three is at-large and we have the same person in District Two is at-large.
Right, and I, we brought this, I brought this up at the November meeting and it did not go anywhere.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, because this is so ambiguous and because this is not accurate as far as who's where, what, or.
Well, this is accurate, this is out of their bylaws and this is out of their minutes.
But I'm saying, what this is saying is not reflect what they're requesting for us to do. So I'm saying, my suggestion is number one, that we request a copy of their bylaws so that the commission can see what's been approved. And then I would also like to see a mission statement from this group because there has been so much confusion and overlapping and unrecorded activity that has gone on. And the money that has been spent or not spent and that is in a, in a bank account currently for this group has no purpose. It has no identifiable purpose anyhow by this particular group. And if we're going to continue to commission money to them literally, I think we need to see what it's supposed to go to. As far as what I've witnessed personally from that particular council, it has changed purposes many times. I know that it's continually gone to the senior centers as the bulk of what they're funding, but they've also been funding their own activities, which seems to be nothing more than hiring a full-time person to be in a particular office, which has changed locations. And from what I understand, two months in a row, this group approved, made the motion and approved to notify their landlord that they would be, um, leaving. And then they did the same thing the next month, so they never notified the landlord, they didn't leave. Then they made the same motion to notify and leave and have they left?
Officially in November and gave him thirty days.
But they had done it the month prior.
They had talked about it the month before, but there had been no motion made, so there was no.
It wasn't an actual motion, okay, and I misspoke.
Well.
But I guess what I'm saying is there's.
Sometimes the minutes aren't reflective of what actually goes on, which is why it's very important to video meetings.
Yeah, it, yeah. So what I'm saying is I think we need a clarification of the purpose of this group. We need to see their bylaws and I would even ask for a mission statement.
Absolutely, and they wrote a mission statement and it's had a mission statement. When you apply to be a five oh one C three, you must give a mission statement on it. So it's very easy to come up with that information. They had a training, um, not everybody went to the training. Two people were given the opportunity to, uh, have it, have the training again just separately, one-on-one, and they chose not to do that. Uh, I think that's a huge red flag.
So let me ask you this, since you probably know more than we do, Jan.
I wouldn't go that far, there's three of you.
Well, about, about, about this particular process, Jan Dallin, you're saying, has finished two terms?
Actually, she's been there six years. So again, this is reason I'm saying, let's, let's.
It needs clarification. Okay, so regardless, she should be ineligible for another, another consecutive term?
Correct.
Okay, so that's District Two. Now, was that advertised and then, and then?
I have the advertisement, I don't have copies of it.
And then does that mean Kathy Moss is in District Two and she applied?
She's in District Two.
And then? She's in District Two.
But she's also at-large there, so.
I don't understand that.
And she was an officer for the senior center, so my question is, has she resigned that? Because you cannot be sitting as an officer in a senior center and be on the council.
Receiving money from the council that appoints them money.
Conflict of interest, which you just discussed with the hospital board.
Yeah, so, Don, can we ask you to send them correspondence? Are they, do they have a new office? Do they have a location?
They're needing a room in the Lincoln Senior Center.
Okay, so they are back to the senior center, at least for now. So could we address them a letter and ask them for their bylaws and their mission statement and a clarification on who?
I have that information, which I'd be happy to get you, but I still.
I know, but I think we need it from them.
I agree, and I don't know who you contact anymore if you're contacting Jan because they have not elected new officers, they were waiting to see who would apply. And like I said, there were only two people that applied and that, one, they didn't honor that applicant.
Well, my concern is, we received this notice which has three people on it.
Okay.
But apparently with the rotation of the year, we should be looking at all of the seats.
Well, let's, let's go through here.
Last week, the people that were up.
Who, who ident, who indicated that they would continue?
Yes.
Okay.
But they need, there's not that in writing apparently. So the, it was all agreed upon at the council that they would apply.
Charlene Watson, Robert Lovelace, and Nancy Nitch.
Okay, but that's still only makes five, or six.
Charlene Watson is District Two and she has one year remaining before her position comes open again and she cannot serve again. Nancy Nitch is on District Three, so she's filling one of District Three's positions.
So she said yes, right, Don? You said, Bob, Charlene, and Nancy all said yes. So she's on there, so that only makes five.
Well, but see.
Cause she's there as one of them.
Marge is already on there. She just had, yeah, she's District One. So you have Judy and Judy Alvers and Marge Snyder on District One.
Yeah, but their seats are open because no one.
Well, no.
Oh, you're saying they're in the second year of their first term, I'm sorry.
So they're there. And then Nancy, I don't know if she applied or not, cause I don't see it in writing, uh, is District Three.
She contacted us.
Another District Three.
Well, that would be who they're asking for on. But it says District Three and at-large.
But again, you do need, you know, if you're, if a body of people make a decision to have people apply to it and they don't apply and they're just doing it by calling a county clerk, really, is that, does that let the council know who's going to be on their?
But you said it was advertised though.
It was advertised and they didn't turn their applications in, there was only two people who did.
Aren't they a non-profit organization that has their own bylaws?
Yes.
So if they have their own bylaws and they are appointing their board members and you guys are just subsequently appointing and approving them.
Are we appointing to District Two or at-large or?
Yeah, it's not very clear. It's not clear, yeah.
And there's, there's the chance of discrimination against it.
I've asked Bob Lovelace the last two weeks and he was just here earlier. I mean, come on.
Well, I have said something and I wasn't in the meeting about it.
We had other business going on because he wasn't on the agenda and neither was this.
Yes, it was.
They.
No, it wasn't, it was.
But they, but I think instead of you being the in-between, which is not your responsibility.
I'm just getting sick of it, they're a non-profit organization that you guys shouldn't even be appointing to. I'm sorry. They should have the laws they should be appointing them.
Where you, according.
I don't disagree.
According to the laws. It's the county commissioners that made those decisions.
I can tell you that.
That's true, it doesn't have to be funded, that's correct.
Right.
That is correct. You know, but, but the thing is, is you're in it now.
Put a hold on this and we'll see what they do. Because it's not our responsibility ultimately.
I'm not gonna be here, but I think the whole senior center, council on aging mess needs to be looked at because I'm telling you.
I, I agree, and that's why I, we tried to do trainings.
I sat here, I sat here and watched it fight over that money and there's other places that money can be used.
I agree, and, and how do you get inclusiveness through the whole county when certain people do not follow that they're only there two years? And then they're calling people and all of a sudden they're automatically renewed or appointed.
What about the people that's calling somebody for an hour and a half? Telling them, telling them that they're not supposed to be on a board.
Okay, but if, if you just say that it's not your responsibility, that would take care of that. If, it is, it comes back to the commissioners' though, responsibility. And what I'm trying to say to, don't make a discriminatory decision here or prejudice against people who applied by what the bylaws say to do. That's what I'm saying, and that's why you need copies of the bylaws.
What we may need to do is inform them that they need to omit it from their own bylaws that we have any appointing duties whatsoever.
That's true.
And then they can stand on their own. And if we, if they come to us requesting grant money out of the senior fund, then we may or may not allot any particular amount that we deem necessary. But it's not a necessity that we fund their operation and.
I, I don't think it has ever been that. If you read the charter or the mill levy, I don't think it's ever been. I think you did that as trying to be accountable for taxpayer money. But maybe it became a little bit.
Well, and I will say, Jennifer O'Hara has indicated that she will follow up on the charter resolution issue, that we don't have the original. So I've brought that up a couple of times and I know she's been occupied with some other issues, but she said she will continue to look into that. So hopefully we'll have some sort of indication as to what our responsibilities actually are with that.
Also, again, that they are supposed to honor Cora requests and I've requested for the minutes for the last two years and still have not got them. And they're also, I've requested to be notified when meetings are in special meetings and I have not got them, so. Again, I would really, would they get a training where it fell, I don't know. Any other questions?
Do we, do we need to make an appointment to Flint Hills before our February appointment, John?
Technically, I believe, yes, I think it expires December thirty-first.
Flint Hills.
Council on Aging.
We have a meeting coming up and also the area of CEO.
He's saying he wanted to continue, correct?
I would move that we appoint Glenn Stigman to council, not council on aging. I would move that we appoint Glenn Stigman to council on, not council on aging.
Flint, Flint Hills area.
And that's, that's in addition to the normal terms that he had. And usually that goes to the CEO who had already granted him them, but whatever, thanks.
I have a motion in a second. There's no further discussion. All of them Thursday. I'll.
Aye.
We'll adjourn until Monday, I guess. There is a possibility that we could have a special meeting, but.